All right, ladies and gentlemen, call to order. This Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, May 22, 2014. Our county administrator, Don Krupp, will do the roll.
All righty, well, good morning. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for me for the Pledge of Allegiance. There's no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Let's go, messed up. With the consent of the commission, I've looked at this and looked at the amount of people here, and I'm thinking I'm going to switch the public hearings. Number one will be number two, and number two will be number one. On this extremely non-controversial decision, I'm sure glad you all didn't -- I should say controversial, which is not, and I'm glad you didn't all turn in speaking cards. Thank you. I really appreciate that. So, the first item on the business, Mr. Krupp? Yes, well, the first item on the agenda is a presentation. It's a presentation of the Certificate of State Accreditation to our outstanding Sheriff's Office, and I'm going to invite Clackamas County Sheriff Craig Roberts up to the microphone to talk about this, and then he will invite our guest here to present the certificate.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Craig Roberts, and Sheriff of Clackamas County. Seated with me here is Mr. Ed Boyd. He's the Executive Director of Oregon Accreditation Alliance, and just wanted to say a few words about the accreditation, and I have to tell you, I'm absolutely thrilled to be here today. It's been a very long process, and I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about accreditation. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boyd. So, the Sheriff's Office recently completed an accreditation process through the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. The accreditation is a process that involves voluntary, independent verification of established standards by an outside organization of professionals and peers. It's a process that confirms a high standard of professionalism in an agency. It's also relatively new to law enforcement. In 1983, the New York State Sheriff's Association became the first law enforcement organization in the country to develop an accreditation program for its members. It was a success and inspired the creation of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in 2000. OAA is now one of 26 state law enforcement accreditation bodies evaluating agencies across the United States. There are 102 accreditation standards covering the full spectrum of law enforcement ethics and procedures. The Sheriff's Office cross-referenced its policies with OAA standards, established working groups at various ranks and levels to speed up the process along, and this led to a complete rewrite of the Sheriff's Office policy manual, which was uploaded to a policy software platform that allows employees to access and search our policies from anywhere. I have to really extend credit where credit is due, and there's a number of people in this room, from our command staff, lieutenants, Andrew Gale, and all the people that really worked very hard, and this process might sound somewhat easy, but I will tell you, when I first took Sheriff, it was a commitment to do this. We have literally been working on this for years. So, for me to kind of be here at this point in time where we've really raised our standard to this level is truly exciting. So, I just want to turn around, and the folks from our office in the back of the room, if you could just stand, if you're not already standing, and I just have to extend a big thank you, because it was, it's not a fun project, I will tell you, as you're sitting in the room, really going over a lot of policies and details for our organization. So, also working very hard on this, obviously, is Mr. Boyd, the Executive Director of Oregon Accreditation Alliance, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Boyd.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and as I mentioned, my name is Ed Boyd, and I'm privileged to be the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, as well as the retired Chief of Police. I want to thank Sheriff Roberts for his invitation, and I'm very honored to be here to present the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office with their original certificate of state accreditation. Accreditation means in an agency, their operations, their management, their policies and procedures meet the best practices the industry has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance, and provides formal and professional recognition that an organization meets or exceeds best-practice expectations of service and quality in the profession. In Oregon, right now, 32 percent of all law enforcement agencies are currently involved in the accreditation program, and just a little over 20 percent of those agencies are credited, so you're still talking a very select group of agencies in the state. It also, in my opinion, takes courage for an organization to take on the rigorous accreditation process. Anytime the chief executive officer of an organization invites an outside third party into their department to review and inspect everything associated with their operations and render an opinion as to whether they meet a set of best-practice standards for that profession, that by itself shows commitment, transparency, and dedication to excellence. The Clackamas County Sheriff's Office joined the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in 2005, and has been steadily and diligently working towards state accreditation. This is the agency's first award of accreditation. An onsite assessment for accreditation was conducted, and an original award of accreditation was conferred by the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Board of Directors and the Executive Committee of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. Although accreditation, as the sheriff mentioned, is an agency-wide process with involvement by many, many people, special recognition needs to go to policy analyst Andy Gale for his outstanding effort and performance as the accreditation manager for his agency and preparing the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for the onsite review process. It is now my distinct honor and pleasure to present Sheriff Craig Roberts and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office with their original award of state accreditation.
Nice.
I feel like I'm graduating. So, thank you very much, Commissioners.
Why the question, Sheriff? And Ed, I see that down at the bottom it says it's good for three years, and it took you nine years to get it. What's the future look like for the next one?
Well, the hard work's been done. We need to monitor it and make sure that we're staying up with all the standards, and we're really looking forward to the future, because it took us a long time to get here, and I can't say how proud I am of the staff at the Sheriff's Office, because they truly are the ones that did all the hard work to make this happen.
All right. One more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, for the staff, too.
So, I have a light on. I just wanted to congratulate the sheriff. I know this has been a goal and a commitment, and a financial commitment, that the Sheriff's Department has put in becoming accredited, accreditation. So, I'm very proud of you and very proud of your staff for finally achieving this. I know this was one of the first things I remember talking to you about, and five and a half years ago, so congratulations.
Well done. All right, so we have now Citizens Communication. I'll call you up in twos with two on deck, and they are Tina Olson and Joe Haverkamp, followed by Jerry Gigliari and Les Poole.
Good morning, Commissioners and the newly-elect. I want to congratulate Paul Savis and Commissioner Tudy Smith, and then tonight we'll know about Jim Bernard, which is really good. I just want to say a couple of things with the county, and as all this election is over, I'm hoping everybody can get back to work, because this is quite a grueling period of elections and everything, and the nastiness, and I just hope, right now, that this county can get back to work and work together. Second thing is the grand opening tonight of the VSO office. You know that I would probably be up here. I went down there actually to take a look at it before I came up here, and I found out the lady that was up front, in the very front, taking, you know, appointments and everything, was let go, and she got moved to another area. So, they had someone from mental health that came up, has no understanding of VS, I mean, what they do, from somebody from mental health, and she didn't have any computer access, so she couldn't really make appointments. So, I was kind of really, you know, hesitant towards that, but the office looks very nice. They seem pretty happy down there, but again, I want to really reiterate that this VSO office needs to be put out to everybody, including like areas with, I had the Pioneer Center actually call me, you know, that deals with the elderly in the area, you know, the adult centers, like in Cambie in Oregon City, and they didn't know anything about it, but I actually went down there and delivered a invitation to them, so they will be attending. But I just want to make sure that everybody hears about this in the county of where the VSO office is, but more importantly is that we take care of our veterans, and as you know, in the news right now, what's happening with all the VAs, and it will end up here, because I've helped a couple people here, that has, VA is not allowed to see them anymore because they're being seen over OHSU because of their cancer. So, it will be here. You can bound determine that they're going to do an audit, and it's going to be found here. But what I want to sit there and say is, this is another distrusting of the VA, and it's going to really not have the veterans go up to the VA right now, because they're not trusting them. I'm hoping that they'll settle this, like in a quick, you know, really form, because it's just, we just don't need this out there at this point. So, what I would sit there and say is just, again, think of the veterans in the county and what we really need to do to get them into the VSO office.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Tina. We're all very concerned about what's happening in the veterans' hospitals. The silver lining for me at the Portland VA Hospital is that we are associated with OHSU. If a service isn't available or a doctor isn't available, the nice thing is they can wheelchair them over through the sky bridge and get services there, and that's been done a lot. I've had personal experience with a veteran who was my neighbor, who I used to take up all the time, and this was years ago, and we would have to sit an entire afternoon for five hours to wait for a prescription. Then, yeah, we would.
I've been there.
And we had, and so now that he was able to do it by mail, and they've made improvements, and I'm sure they're looking over their shoulders right now, hoping they're not one of those. So, I remain positive about the Portland VA, but I understand your concerns very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Ludlow and Commission. In behalf of the Citizens Watch Committee, we'd like to congratulate Paul Savis. And Bernard, I know you're going to be officially sworn in earlier, I mean, this afternoon. The citizens have spoken, and they have said that they want Jim and Paul on their commission. So, in fact, a number of the executive club also called to congratulate. Well, all I can say is God is in charge. No one likes dirty politics. We at the Watch Committee will still be watching, and if we see something that we don't feel that is fair to our citizens, we'll be back. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And so, the two aforementioned people, Jerry Gigliari and Les Poole, followed by Cindy Lewis-Wolfram and Ginny Davidson.
Good morning. It's a delight to be here. I'm on the other side of the river, but it's always nice to come and say thank you for your service of what you're doing for the county, and a sincere congratulation. We think Clackamas County, we have nothing but winners anyway, so it's nice to come here and say thank you for your service and continued service, and we'll keep electing you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
You're talking to me, right? I'm just checking. All right, I'm just checking. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Les Poole, Clackamas County. Jerry is very humble. She has worked for the veterans for years, and I just want to point that out. She's been a real advocate. A few comments today. I'll even get done in less than three minutes and amaze the chair. Damascus, we hear a lot about Damascus. It's unfortunate what's occurred out there, but you ever seen a situation where a family member or someone in a bar kind of stirs things up and starts a fight, and all hell breaks loose, and then they slip out the back door, and they're not accountable for what happened? And you end up with factions or people fighting with each other. While it wasn't intended, that's a lot of what's happened in Damascus. And the situation in Damascus, the recipe for trouble was created by the same folks that have brought us a lot of fiascos. Metro, the regional government. When you put that much power and that much authority in one organization's hands and give them the power to financially punish and financially dominate the agenda and have too much control over the cities and counties, you're asking for trouble. Now that the election's over, maybe next week we could get an update on the progress of the road maintenance fee and the road issue. While we've been handling a lot of things, I know there's been outreach done, but the roads are crumbling. They're not getting any better. On my way here, I avoided plenty of potholes, so I don't blame the current commission for that. I think it was a real problem that was kicked down the road for a long time, way too long. You know, we have a lot of things done in Salem, and there's been a few things here that were done and passed as emergencies. Well, the condition of the roads has been an emergency for a long time, so I know you're all working on that, and keep us informed about what you're doing, because if you put something out for a vote, and the folks don't know really what's going on, and it's not really justified in their minds, they've seen too much waste, and they're going to turn it down. Congratulations to everyone that won. Interesting dynamic. I encourage the viewers to watch the first 10 or 15 minutes of last week's board meeting. It's okay to hold people accountable, but it's not okay to attack someone that probably doesn't have it coming. I just want to say that if you look at some of the numbers out there and how close things were, there's a message. I've got three seconds left. Thank you.
Definitely a world's record.
Chair Ludlow, if I may.
Yes, Jerry.
Have a moment, please. I appreciate his, the gentleman that just left, credit for the veterans, but actually, I'm with active military, and I have an office at Camp Whiticum, and when I'm not there, I can be found out at the air guard. You know, you can't pass up those F-15s, but I'm very active, with our active military, and I'm with what they call the family program, because while the men and women are deployed, they have families at home, so the sacrifice isn't just the person that's engaged in combat or deployed, it's the whole family. And you know, we have so many that are active that come from Clackamas County, and we stand tall and proud. Thank you for the extra moment.
Thank you, Jerry. For the public's information in regards to the education and outreach we've done on roads, we did that for a period of around six months or more, and we decided, the commission, that we would look at a poll, which we had done, and see how it was going, that education about our needs. Les, I appreciate you bringing it up, the $17 million, we really need over a 21-year period of time to get down in every road in Clackamas County and make sure they're at least in good condition. Not excellent, just good. Now, the problem has been that we know out there that 54 percent of our roads are in fair and poor condition, but the public, through a poll, said that 70 percent of them believe that our roads are in fine condition. So, we can't very much go out and ask for money when people think that there isn't a problem, when in fact there is. So, the education and outreach program will continue, and sometime in the near future, definitely this year, we'll probably do another poll and look at and make a decision as to whether we want to go out and ask for money at that time, because that's what it takes for roads. Again, my announcement that, and I didn't know this until I took office, that you cannot use property tax revenue for roads. It's an old, 100-year-old law in Oregon. I don't know why they passed it, probably when they started first getting automobiles, but it's cumbersome at times. Next, too, Cindy Lewis-Wolfram and Ginny Davidson.
She knows I'm on my way to Manzanita. You're right. It's a beautiful, sunshiny day, and it's actually sunny there, too.
Can I come, too?
Okay. Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, good morning. I'm happy to be here. I'm glad it's over. I'm sure you are, too. And on behalf of the Concerned Citizens Groups years ago that Jane Locan started, she called from California to see how everything was going, and I told her, and she said, "Praise God, Ginny, it's over. I know you're not young anymore, and you've been walking your shoes off, but a year ago you couldn't walk." I said, "Praise God for that, too." But anyway, I want to thank all of the coffee, the people that did coffees, the people that were part of the card party at Pronto Pizza, over 2,000 cards that went out. Tudy knows about the card party. I did one for her. Anyway, it works. Also, the phone calls, the people on the phones, the people went door-to-door, all those wonderful guys that put up the signs. This wasn't my first trip, but I'm a little older now, and I guess I'm glad to be part of the Positive A Team, and everybody said, "That's what we're calling it," and I said, "Well, what's A for?" And they said, "Awesome." I said, "I was hoping it wasn't awful." Anyway, you do have to have a sense of humor, but I'm glad it's over for all of us, and thank you for the positive campaign. People do care. The victory party at High Rocks, Elaine and Hook, known them for years. It was wonderful. And so now we've got beyond the campaign, the signs and fun. Let's go and serve our businesses and the business people that really did come out for some of our campaign, for some of our people running. And like I told Punky the other night, I said, "Been around a long time, Punky. This probably will be my last campaign for anybody, but I'll never quit voting." Thank you. Let's move on with what's happening in Clackamas County. It's a great county, and we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Lewis-Wolfram. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm here today not to speak to the election. I'm here today to speak to a vote that took place back months ago. Last fall, when you were redoing the ZDOs with regard to the industrial areas, a question that we had was the protection guaranteed by the North Shore Plan, I'm sorry, North Shore Boundary Plan, and that is the quarter-mile area that was protected by that, and we were told that that would be left as it was, but that you weren't going to do, you're trying to get things so it'd be easier in those ZDOs for businesses to come in. We were glad to see that for that industrial area. We want businesses to come in there. We know that there's a beautiful area there that the planning department is trying to get organized to sell to businesses for their work, but it's directly across the street off Caps Road from a new business that's trying to formulate there, a business that is just as potentially stinky as the recycling group that's just down the street a little bit on that side of the road, off of Caps and 132nd, 22nd. I know that you don't vote for things, yea or nay, to do with the planning division, but you did vote for this ZDO, and somehow, those guarantees about keeping that quarter-mile buffer zone in place made it off the redone ZDOs that you approved last year. Our CPO has been working very hard to get this particular business, which is called Speedy Septic, to find another location other than this prime G1 properties that are available for industrial use. We need your help. We may not need you to vote on something, but we need you to talk about it and study it and find out how it got off the law that you passed. You made promises. Please make sure your promises weren't just edited accidentally. And as far as the election goes, I agree with Jen that it's a good thing that we're done, and that the negativity is gone for at least five months. Let's see if those of us who believe that we should be doing this in a more positive manner can speak to those who are still in the race somewhere and convince them that they need to be more agreeable and more truthful.
Perfect timing. Ann Shirley-Sotterberg. Battling cleanup today.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I get to stand all by myself here. It's quite an honor. I come before you to, about the elections also, I am so glad it's all over. Mr. Bernard, congratulations. Mrs. Smith, congratulations. Mr. Savis, congratulations. I'm so happy we don't have to go to November for two of you. I'm looking forward to our commission now, working towards the good of the county. But I will say that I think we proved that a good, positive grassroots effort was something that carried this election forward, instead of a lot of mailings and billboards and negativity. And I think that it should show future candidates that the positive image is what the people want. I think that our county is better off having put this foot forward than many others around us. I know the fighting that's going on in Washington County. I heard about some of it yesterday. I was at the Dunaway Forum yesterday, and Washington County had a few ugly battles this year. So, I feel like positivity is taking a step forward in Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Commissioner Savis.
I want to thank everyone for bringing their thoughts forward today. My comments about the negativity in campaigning and our, you know, I know we all try to encourage people to vote and take a role in what we do, and, you know, elect their officials or their measures, whatever it may be, and we want, we encourage voter registration. But in my door-to-door part of campaigning, I certainly talked to a lot of people that were either non-affiliated, no longer registered to vote and don't care to, or people that were frankly didn't want to even participate in the election, only because of the confusion, the negativity, and the mixed messaging, and felt that, you know, the system is broken. And whether you look at the national politics or the local politics, we got a sample of that, and I think that, you know, my campaign was about And I think that, you know, my campaign was about running positive and running on the issues, and I think that if we all did that, I think there would be a lot more, elections would be a lot more informative and positive and moving our society forward. But when there are fabrications and misrepresentations and they're negative, that turns people off. We watched what happened at Clackamas River Water when they had a lot of discourse, a lot of negativity going on on their board. We're watching some of that in Damascus, and we just witnessed part of that right here in Clackamas County with the commission election, you know, now, two years ago. The same thing happened two years ago. I'm just really hoping that, you know, that we can pull together and everyone focus on really what the issues are today and not what they were five years ago or three years ago, whatever they may be. I used to say that trying to be an activist or try to get people involved in whatever their issues are, their passions were, I always say, "People are too complacent, they're apathetic and they're complacent." Well, you know, right now, I'm not using the word complacent, people aren't complacent, they're just frustrated and they're giving up. That's not being complacent, but they're apathetic, and that apathy is still there. And I think if we really want to, again, to make our future for ourselves here today, for our generations, our kids, our grandkids, we need, local government needs to step up and build the infrastructure and all the things that we need to make us all successful, businesses and all. And to be boiled down in partisan politics in a nonpartisan environment is just unfair. And we need to encourage people to take a role in, at least to vote, and that's on us to do it honestly, cleanly, and positively.
I did call and congratulate the winners, but I found with interest that last meeting and the meeting before, there's some of the people who testified today, absolutely chagrined by the fact that there was a postcard out there with puppet strings on there. Somehow I was blamed for it, I had nothing to do with it, I certainly wasn't running for office, I have nothing to do with that. Yet they tore those up. Now a postcard was sent out about me, as somehow I had a candidate in my pocket. It was just as offensive as the puppet string ones, but I don't see anybody up here tearing those cards up. Yeah, I too am glad this is over. But if you really look at the campaign, however it was run by friends and by others, it should be about issues. Goodness knows that when I ran for office and there was John Ludlow's bully signs all over Clackamas County, that I suffered more than any of these people. My personal life was impugned by others, and I certainly came into this job with a reputation I didn't earn. Yet where's the people defending me on that wicked postcard? I guess they thought that one was fair, but the puppet string ones wasn't. Interesting. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the conclusion of, thank you, that is the conclusion of the public comments tonight. We have two public hearings, as I announced, I've actually switched those, so the first one will be number two, and Mr. Crupp.
Certainly, the public hearing before you now is consideration of a board order regarding Rose Villa and a request to issue private activity bonds. Mr. Chris Story from the County Council's office is here to give you a report.
Good morning, commissioners. This very popular public hearing item, it is something of an unusual nature, because while the caption says issuing bonds in the amount to exceed sixty-five million dollars, the county is not in any way issuing debt or incurring any sort of liability. This is a request by Rose Villa to be able to issue bonds themselves. To do so in the manner in which they wish to do so, they need to have the approval of local elected officials according to the Internal Revenue Code. So with the requirement under the relevant statutes is that you hold a public hearing, receive public testimony, and then there is a proposed order that has been provided to you that would allow you to determine that it is appropriate to let Rose Villa go forward in their issuance of bonds. And after that approval, the county's involvement would end. We are in no way guaranteeing or certifying the debt.
Thank you, Chris. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to open a public hearing on Rose Villa's request to issue private activity bonds, and there is graciously one speaker, one lone speaker who will speak for all, right? And that is Vassar Bird.
Good morning, I'm Vassar Bird, the CEO at Rose Villa. But most importantly, I've brought some friends with me. This is a project we've been involved on for a very long time, just as long as the sheriff's certification process, actually. And the residents are very involved, and they asked what could they do to help, and I said, "Well, you know, just come to the hearing, see how it works." So, very briefly, I know all of you have been on our campus for one reason or another, mostly meetings or town halls, and we have a fifty-four-year history of serving the Portland area as a not-for-profit senior living community. And our need right now is to update our facilities, our infrastructure, add some new housing, better meeting facilities, more dining venues, to serve both our own residents, and while we're doing it, we're going to improve river road, pedestrian crosswalks, so the entire neighborhood that we live in will benefit from our investment of tens of millions. And it's something we've saved for, for a long time, we feel like we have a great project. We're very excited to be able to go forward and essentially provide for the next fifty years of Rose Villa serving the community. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Well, thank you coming forward with this. I just want to repeat what Chris Story said, so the folks out there are not concerned that Clackamas County is taking out a sixty-five million dollar bond, because we are not. This is a strange little law stuck in someplace, like Mr. Story said, with the IRS code that the governing body needs to approve this, so the very private nonprofit sector can go ahead. We will assume no responsibility, nor are we liable for the debt, and nor will it count on Clackamas County's debt service. Want to be really sure about that, because when you brought it forward, even to me, I was saying, "Whoa, hang on here, sister," because I didn't want to be having to, in some far-out notion, we'd be stuck with it. So thank you for making that clarification, and with that in mind, I'm sure we'll just move forward on this.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to welcome all of you here today. My dear friend Margaret Pritchard is here, and I have lunch with her regularly, and, boy, you have great food there, I have to say. We have great lunches. Okay. But I look forward to continuing to visit Margaret and her friends there on a regular basis. I think you do a wonderful job, and I'm pleased that we can let the community know that we're in support of you moving forward with this necessary rehabilitation of a really nice area. So, thanks, Vassar.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vassar. I will tell you, my first experience with Rose Villa was when I was a sophomore in high school. I got transferred from Milwaukee High School over to Rex Putnam, when they should open. And Rex Putnam, the superintendent of public schools in Oregon for over twenty-five years, was a resident there. So they brought some lucky sophomores, we were kind of the beginning class, into Rex Putnam, and to meet him. It was very comfortable at that time. Now, I understand, that was fifty years ago, too, for me. It's probably time for a little remodel. But it was an incredible place back then, that people desperately wanted to live there. So I think it's time to, I'm glad that, like Tudy says, there's no debt for us, no obligation for us. I'm really happy that you found another way, because the first one didn't work out, but another way to get this done. I'm sure it'll still be a process in a few years, but at least it's got it started, so congratulations on that. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask, let's see, I will ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order regarding Rose Villa's request to issue private activity bonds.
Second.
Oh, Jim. That was a race to the finish.
Got a duet for a second here.
I will defer to Commissioner Bernard.
Well, what he did to you, so I guess, I'm going to second it. Second, motion made by Smith, seconded by Chair Ludlow. All right. And so, any further questions or clarifications, commissioners? Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I just want to say that this has been a long, will be a dream, long-hoped for and planned, and, you know, the senior population in Clackamas County is on the rise, and there's a great need out there. So I'm excited, I have served as a so-called mayor of this area for a number of years because it's unincorporated, and I'm just really honored to have the ability to move this project forward. I never thought I would, I'm a, it's a bit confusing why this is even coming to us, but I can't wait to vote yes.
Commissioner Savas.
Well, again, congratulations, but I do want to say thank you for all the opening the facilities up for community use. I have been to so many meetings at your facility, public meetings, and just to open that up and provide that community service is huge, and just want to say thank you.
All right, if there's no further comments or questions or clarifications, Mary, would you please call the poll?
Yes. Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Wasn't that easy, folks? And don't feel like you really have to hang around. If you'd like to leave, that's fine. But if you really want to, no. Thank you. All right, Mr. Crupp, number two.
Okay, so this is going to be a hard act to follow, but the second public hearing is a second reading for Ordinance Two, two thousand fourteen, that amends Chapter six-point-oh-six of the Parks Rules for Clackamas County, and declaring an emergency. I'm going to ask Kathleen Rathdeter from the County Council's office and Mr. Rick Groon from County Parks to come on up and give you a short report or answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Good morning, Chair Ludlow, commissioners. As you recall, this is the second reading of the amendment to the Parks Ordinance, which is changing the time, clarifying the time in which someone has to respond to a citation, and then shortening the time in which someone has to change their park cancel or change a park's reservation. We talked about this last time, so unless you have any questions.
Well, no, question more like statement, this is housekeeping. Agreed?
Yes.
It's just small adjustments that make sense, and actually, in a lot of ways, it's responsiveness to need and the actual rules of the park need to be tweaked every once in a while, and especially with the online stuff, which we're trying to encourage. It will greatly open up the availability to those slots which suddenly cancel, and people can get into our parks when they're not full. And yet, before, we had a little bit of a delay to get that way. So, Rick, you had something, too?
No, I just appreciate the support and look forward to your continued support of our parks and come out here, park season is open.
All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing then. So I open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. And I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the ordinance be read by title only.
We have to make a motion. I move we read the ordinance by title only.
I'm going to read my meriscript here.
Well done, Commissioner Bernard, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second, and now we will proceed. Any further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'm going to read it first.
This is not a good day. All right, yes.
Ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-zero-one-four, and ordinance amending Chapter six-point-oh-six, Park Rules of the Clackamas County Code, and declaring an emergency.
Chair Ludlow, I move we adopt ordinance number zero-two-two-zero-one-four, amending Chapter six-point-oh-six, Park Rules of the Clackamas County Code, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you for rescuing me. Commissioner Savas, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Savas, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Now, on to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, thanks you two. Thanks, Rick. All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda for May twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval to apply to the Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Council for the youth and community grant for Prevent Net Services, under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes, under the Department of Employee Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University, Mark O. Hatfield School of Government for the Oregon Fellows Program, and under Service District Number Five, which is street lighting, approval of the bylaws for the Clackamas County Service District Number Five. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. County Administrator update.
Well, I do have several items for you this morning. One is, is I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our own, Sheriff's Deputy Dustin Cochran, who was on patrol on Wednesday morning, and he noticed a smoke coming from a home in Sandy. Deputy Cochran ran into the house, it was filled with heavy smoke, and saved a gentleman before the fire department arrived, and luckily, everyone else made it out safely as well. So I just wanted to take a moment and personally thank Deputy Cochran for risking his own safety to protect a fellow Clackamas County citizen. And, you know, last Friday, we honored Grady Waxenfelter, the county waymaster who was sensibly killed while doing his job. I thought it was a really wonderful ceremony here on the county campus, and Grady's family had a chance to see and hear how much Clackamas County commissioners and staff cared for and honored Grady, and I wanted to thank you all, as well as the county employees who attended and participated in the event. I did want to share with you that Mr. Dave Pope, who is an electrical inspector with the Department of Transportation and Development, and a friend and share, he would ride motorcycles with Mr. Waxenfelter on a regular basis, he and other county employees, asked me to share with county employees that he and Mr. Terry Ellison, who's a retired employee of ours, used to work in the sign department, are organizing a memorial motorcycle ride in honor of fallen county waymaster Grady Waxenfelter. They are scheduling it for June the fourteenth, they are still planning the route, but they're going to plan a route that they rode with Grady on an annual basis in the past. Those who are interested in joining them on the ride can contact Mr. Pope at five-oh-three-seven-eight-oh-three-six-two-five. And then other good news I have to share with you, I learned earlier this week that one of our dispatchers with Clackamas Communications, that's our nine-one-one center, was just recently selected as the National Telecommunicator of the Year by APCO International. That is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. We learned this news just this week, on Monday, and Cory, his nomination was selected from some forty, forty other dispatchers from throughout the country. His nomination and recognition was related to work that he's been doing with CCOM's Computer Aided Dispatch and his work with Officer, the shooting involving Officer Libkey. So I wanted to give congratulations to Cory and everyone else who was a part of supporting him for that effort. That's a remarkable achievement to have national recognition for that. And then the last thing I needed to mention is that with next week's schedule, you know, Monday is Memorial Day, and our offices will be closed, but then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at eight AM to five PM, we'll be commencing the Budget Committee meetings to deliberate on the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. They'll be held over in the Development Services Building, Room one fifteen, and we have the entire schedule for budget deliberations on the county website online. On Thursday, May the twenty-ninth, at five-thirty PM, we'll have an opportunity for the public to comment on the budget. And because we do have the week devoted to Budget Committee meetings, we will not have regular study sessions or a regular business meeting next week. That's my report.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Crupp. And we will go with commissioners' communication and start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I look forward to the budget. It's one of my favorite things here at the county. I dove into it last year, I'm diving into it now, and we're doing a little bit different. It's going to be very uniform, the way the agencies present. Dawn has put a maintenance level budget forward, and we can make adjustments on that. And it's really important to hear from the people on what services they want the county to look at. There's additional ten million dollars in asks from our agencies. There's no way we will ever meet that. One of my questions will be, if you want additional funding for your program, what program do you have, maybe that's currently not working quite right, that you could do away with? I'm very hesitant to add more money to an agency and grow the costs and size of government, when maybe we're already doing it right. So, I've said this before, I'm putting the folks on notice, I will be asking that question, and hope to get good answers and input from you as well. I'd like to maybe clear something up. I feel this commission, through this last election cycle, has worked very well together. We're able to come and discuss issues in our executive session, and our work studies, our study sessions in here, with each other in the halls, we pass on this, do you know about this, do you know about this? And when I walked through the door, my campaign is left in the car, and I think you can say the same for the rest of the Commissioners. The folks who work for us on the fourth floor, our staff, probably rarely even knew that I was involved in a campaign, unless they would read something online, or something that was said in the newspapers, or something like that. So, I think, I just want to clear up, if there's a misperception, some things were said today, but we have worked well together, we have moved the agendas forward in the county. We're looking at our strategic plan, which will be adopted a little bit later. That is huge, huge, huge. I'm very happy with that. One of the things that I'm so happy about is creating ten thousand new jobs in five years, which is two thousand jobs, family wage jobs in the county, so that's where I have zeroed in on, and the other Commissioners are of like-minded to make sure that happens. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I'd like to talk about a few things today. First of all, I had a wonderful meeting with a citizen the other day, Becky Jo Goodwater, and she is a four-H person who works very closely with kids to get them interested in horses. And as you know, at our fairgrounds, there is an Oregon Horse Fair. So essentially, her fear was that since we are looking at facilities and making a decision, current decision, about how we're going to handle the barn situation there, whether it be tear down, rehab, whatever that decision is, after we get another, we're looking at another opinion of the structural quality, is how they were going to actually hold that fair for children there, particularly kids, you mentioned, that were low income, that did not have an opportunity to have anything in their lives. That is so good for them to do, and I think I can attest to that, as having raised kids that didn't have horses, but they certainly had sheep. In any case, I wanted to thank Ron Oberg and Lori of the, Ron is a member of the Oregon Fair Board, excuse me, the Clackamas County Fair Board, for actually taking phone calls from us in the office, and answering her questions quickly and efficiently, and I'm glad that that is going to move forward. A lot of these kids, the issue was that they can't afford to keep transporting their horses back and forth on a daily basis, and without the barn and the stalls, they had to figure out where they were going to put the animals and the horses. And we all know horses can be skittish, so the other issue was, if it was going to be quiet, if it's going to be well, you know, maintained, so you're not dealing with kids camping out there with a lot of noise and disruption, so, you know, the horses will remain calm. So it was a fun discussion, and it was kind of down to the nitty-gritty, I think, of what we do best in this county, and then just meet with citizens, talk to them, and help them solve problems. So, thanks, Ron and Lori, for your help with that. This morning, we had an interesting economic development summit called Exporting Clackamas County, and it was really, really fascinating, because we had folks from the government sector, who actually worked with economic development, to try and get folks up to speed on how they can start exporting their products from businesses here in Clackamas County. And then the other panel were local businesses, Benchmade Knives, for example, was there, and I have a list somewhere of the other ones, Benchmade Knife, Pico Astronomics, Fix and Zip T, CTF Enterprises, and Bob's Red Mill. And the business panel actually talked about what they needed to conduct business here in Clackamas County. And the question I asked them at the end of their presentation was, so what can we do as a government entity that can help you retain and expand your businesses here? And the two things that popped out loud and clear were, okay, streamlining regulations, making sure your permitting processes are friendly, and efficient, and quick, which is really fair, getting to guess with that. We'll note that people aren't anti-regulatory, they just want it done efficiently well, and they want to have the certainty of knowing what they're supposed to do, how they're supposed to do it, when the deadline is, so they can get it done, and get moving with their manufacturing plants. So, that was good. The second piece that really popped up was workforce. And so I'm going to think very diligently about helping and working with our economic development folk and my Commissioners, to identify what the needs are out there. We already have an idea of what some of the needs are, things like welders, you know, folks who have the computer skills to do the advanced manufacturing things, people that have the degrees to work in our medical cluster and those systems, but to continue to work to identify what's out there, what the needs are, and work with our education partners, to make sure that we get people trained up and skilled up. Those are the two things that we can do as, you know, hi, we're the government, we're here to help business, is to make sure that we work closely with them. I was excited, these are private sector companies, and they're doing international work, and I do think that Clackamas County is continually on the economic development uptick, and that we are going to see a recovery equal to Washington County and to Multnomah County. We have to work with the sectors we have here. And remember, we are basically innovating a new sector here in our county, we're the first ones in the state to do it, that's the digital media and technology sector, and our college has already, Clackamas Community has already stepped up to the plate, and become the only college in the state of Oregon, community and otherwise, that has motion capture technology available for training to get people into the pipeline for that industry. So it's pretty complex, but it's the most fun thing I think I can do as a Commissioner, and I just want to say, I really enjoy working with all these Commissioners, as I've said before, everybody brings good things to the table. I'm glad we kind of get past what I call the silly season. I'm sorry that people's, you know, chair get hurt with some of the negative stuff. I remember I had my head on a puppet with strings mailed all over the county at one time in my life, and it wasn't very pleasant. So, I understand how it kind of makes you feel, especially when you work hard, and you're doing the best you can with what you've got, and you just kind of have to take it on the chin and move on, and realize that you have friends and people that love you and appreciate you, as we all do, and you just continue to do the good public service you were put here to do. So that's the news from the clack.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
First thing, I, if that postcard offended you, I apologize. I actually sent you the picture, and said, you look very handsome in it. It was, I never saw that as being negative at all. It was, frankly, it was very factual. I think the ones with the puppets and the cabals, and all this other stuff was way out of line. But I apologize if it offended you. We picked the most handsome picture we could find of you.
There's not many of those.
No. You know, and the other thing is light rail, the bond to pay for light rail in Milwaukee passed, which no one will ever be able to say Milwaukee didn't vote for funding light rail again. And as a matter of fact, no one in Milwaukee ever voted down light rail. They voted down the funding of light rail today, and that election turned that around. Congratulations to Milwaukee for raising four million dollars to pay that debt to try and, Damascus. I heard comments about metros to blame. Sorry, metro is not to blame, what is happening in Damascus. I don't frankly know, have any idea what they're going to do out there now. If the Commission can help, I'm willing to help. I attended a meeting where some folks wanted the annex from Damascus. It was, it was quite the meeting, a little rally ahead of the meeting. I don't know, I think, I think the citizens really need to sit down and talk about what they want to do in the future, and decide whether they need a new mayor, or they need to go away, frankly. It's too bad that Clackamas County has been chained to this ball, when we need to grow, and we have an area that doesn't want to do it. And consequently, Clackamas County has this huge, open area that has so much potential, and when you're at the regional table, and you're talking about urban growth boundary expansion, what do they look at first? Well, Clackamas County has this great area they can expand to, when the fact is, it isn't going to occur. And so, I think we need to be at the metro table, asking about, do we want to take them out of the urban growth boundary? And where in Clackamas County can we put that urban growth boundary that is best for Clackamas County, best for the citizens, and could produce job opportunities? So I look forward to that discussion, but I don't think it has anything to do with metro. I was there when they first started the discussion, it was so positive. It was so positive. I was at the last comp plan meeting, and it was so, so sad, that it had decayed to that. Matter of fact, they never even got to the comp plan discussion. They talked about recalls, they talked about disincorporation, never really getting to the plan at all, and I thought that was very sad. Metro, and as a matter of fact, contributed lots of money to developing that plan, lots of money that frankly, has just gone down the drain. And I wouldn't contribute anymore. I'm certainly not going to advocate for Clackamas County to fund more planning, until the citizens really decide to do it, and move forward on it, or to disincorporate. And I think the court case illustrates a lot. People are tired of waiting, and they need, and if they want to do what they want to do for generations, frankly, to take their retirement, a lot of that property is people's retirement, and develop it, and Damascus isn't helping them. I'm sure Happy Valley is more than happy to do it. So, good luck, Happy Valley. And I look forward to working with Damascus, and figuring out some way to resolve this problem, or to just dissolve it, and make sure that Clackamas County, I think it's very important that if we lose this potential, Clackamas County gets that land, somewhere in Clackamas County, that we can look to job growth, housing growth, and what's best for Clackamas County. Not that Washington County or Multnomah County can say, well, we'll take it. We need to have that opportunity, and we should be the only ones to have that opportunity. So that's what I'll be advocating at Metro. And I thought the event this morning was fairly good. I've heard most of it before.
You have to fix and zip.
Yeah, I saw that when I walked out. And I wish I could think of something I could develop to export.
Yeah.
I wish I could. I think that tourism is another export, that's really important to Clackamas County, and if you go up to the mountains, you'll hear how important it is to welches, and rotodendron, and government camp, and all those places. So, tourism's also a valuable resource, and that money comes in, it doesn't go out, so that's an investment that we should focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, being that we're on this subject a little bit, I'll just build on a little bit more. And, you know, I used the example earlier, Clackamas River Water, when they had, a couple of years ago, when they had their, some unsettling, which they have fortunately, you know, got down and stabilized, and things are moving forward, and good things are happening there. But on this Damascus thing, and I heard Mr. Poole's comments, I've heard Commissioner Bernard's comments, and, you know, I, to me, my perspective or viewpoint, observation has been along the lines that this 2040 plan that's adopted, that Metro is, you know, fulfilling, I think, I think that, you know, the realization that people come across in the comp plan, or when a development happens in other parts of the county, and they realize that this is all code, and this is part of the plan, that those realities don't reflect what people live in Oregon, or live in Clackamas County for. And they're metropolitan in nature, if they come across as density, or multi-level, and when they see those kinds of plans, you don't envision Damascus and those kinds of plans. You know, large yards, I know, consume a lot of space, but there's a market out there for that. There's people that want to have, you know, a yard, a dog, their kids play in the yard, and then there's people that maybe can't afford that in today's pricing, and they have to settle for a smaller property. And when people retire, they want a smaller property, something easier to maintain. But I think it's the backlash of people realizing that, wait a minute, this is part of the plan, this is part of the 20, this is what Metro has been implementing. It's not that it's, I think people, what's the saying, read the fine print. And, you know, the comp plan and all our codes, I mean, it's not anything that, that anyone could read without an armful, or a roomful of attorneys, to help decipher what it all means. And that's, I think that's the reality, and it's, people say it's Nibbyism, not in my backyard. Well, they didn't know that that was even in the plans, and that code did spell that out. So, that's my, that's my observation, is that maybe there's needs to be a revisit, and to say, where, what, where can we preserve certain suburban neighborhoods, and so they're not threatened? Where can we preserve some of the values that make Clackamas and Oregon what it is, and protect that? I think that's the balance we got to strike. So, just wanted to speak to that a little bit. As the Administrator mentioned earlier, we will not be meeting next week, as a, for our business meeting, our work sessions, we're going to be embroiled in budget. So I encourage people to get involved. I've been up here for three years, on my fourth year, saying, please get involved, please show up. There's usually very, not very many citizens that show up at all. And yet, it's about how we, how we, how we budget, how we spend our money, and hopefully, this year, have a better reflection of whatever discretionary dollars remain, or how we budget, that somehow we align those with some of the priorities, either that the board has spelled out in its goal-setting, or whether the surveys, and the community citizen surveys we've done for years, reflect, and that's been my goal. I did learn, in my first year as a county commissioner, of this state law statute that says you cannot spend property tax dollars on roads. But what I have learned, and I think I have said for quite a long time, that there is money that can legally be spent in Clackamas County to augment monies that are being spent with gas tax dollars, that maybe perhaps shouldn't be, or currently are today. So, that, staff has, I want to thank staff, commend all the staff that worked on that. We've identified four point four million dollars that are being spent today of gas tax dollars, on things that general fund monies, property tax can pay for. So, we're asking people to find some discretionary dollars, maybe in the future, should there be a measure on the ballot, which I hopefully will, if we can get enough feedback and recognition of our problems, we'll be asking them. But, you know, they're also saying, I believe that we can, the county can do more with our, to help on the roads, and they can find that money within, and we've, I've identified, with staff's help, four point four million. So I'm hoping, as I did last year, at the last budget cycle, somehow, find a mechanisms or a commitment that we can use, find some of those monies, and direct them towards that, to free up dollars that can be spent on asphalt. It can be spent filling and fixing those roads properly. So I think we need a commitment, as I said last week, you know, it's kind of time for the county to put its money where its mouth, is we're going to ask our citizens for more money, I think we should show that we're making an equal effort to do so. So that's really what I have. So, so that's really what I have. I am, been talking with staff and some of our folks about the Commissioner Roundtable, and we're talking about putting that perhaps on the road. If that's only myself, then it's only myself, but, and making it issue oriented. So I think we'll have one more meeting in June, I believe, and that'll be during the budget week, the final budget week. And so we'll, we'll be doing that on June 4th, that Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, at 5:30. And perhaps that will go on the road and kind of, we'll send an agenda perhaps, that if I do do this on the road, that it'll be topical about some matter that's either important to that community or important to the county in general. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Well, housekeeping wise, real quick, the Commissioners had an opportunity this last week to, to have a diversity discussion with a visiting expert, Dr. Caprice Hollins. What a fascinating woman. For a diversity trainer, she wasn't PC. She said, you know, politically correct, that is. She said, mistakes are actually healthy. And she said, I make plenty of them. And at one point in time, she says, you white folks. And see, that wasn't offensive to me, but it was really great to have kind of a let your hair down, if I had any, you know, discussion about diversity without fear that somebody's going to take offense. Not that we said offensive things, but it was just a very lighthearted and candid discussion, I think, did me a lot of good, and I know all the rest of the Commissioners appreciated that as well. We will have a new website. It's going to come out on the 1st of July. And, you know, some of the things, you know, if you look at any website, the first page is a header and there's a footer. Those are the, kind of the most important areas. And it will be some input from the commission and definitely staff as to what should be in those, those positions, like, for example, in regards to the Veterans Office and Services, et cetera, I'm a believer that that should be up in the header and should be a simple click, are you a vet? Something simple that'll get people to click into that department. But I will tell you, after viewing this new website, that we put $50,000 towards exploring the avenues of how this would happen, is going to be extremely outstanding compared to what you have seen for the last several years. We're really looking forward to getting that out. Some of us also went last Saturday to the Heroes of Hope Gala up at the Oregon Golf Club, and that was to help fund Clackamas Women's Services. Obviously, a very successful organization in helping those who are disadvantaged, specifically women, but not only women, because they have children. They go hand in hand. So it was great to see them raise just a ton of money that day. It was great to see Commissioner Bernard throwing big money and embarrassing me at my little money, but it was really great to see the generosity in that room that day. Now for the, the business part. I got to back clean up on this. There's an open house that was mentioned. Clackamas County Veterans Services Office invites you to an open house welcoming the community to its new office. The open house will serve as a commitment, a recommitment to all veterans in Clackamas County. Veteran Services Open House is Thursday, May 22nd.
Today.
Oh, it is today, yes. From 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. here up at the Red Soils Campus Courtyard near the Veterans Memorial. So that address is 2051 Kane Road, Oregon City. Light refreshments will be served. Come up and talk to the VSOs and other veterans. Also, the next town hall, isn't till September 10th, but it's good to know where it's at. It's in Estacada, sponsored by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce, located at their city hall, 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada. The time is 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Ladies and gentlemen, Memorial Day is a federal holiday, a U.S. holiday that began after the Civil War, and that time was known as Decoration Day, to commemorate the Union and Confederate soldiers who died in the Civil War. By the 20th century, Memorial Day had been extended to honor all Americans who have died while in military service. In 1968, Congress declared the last Monday of May as the official day for Memorial Day. Remember too, that we shouldn't be just honoring the dead, certainly them, but also the people that are alive, that are veterans. They are just as important, and it's just as important to consider what they went through, many of them in hard battle and survived. It is also known as the day that marks the official start of summer, a day when families get together for barbecues and parties. This Monday, Memorial Day, please take a moment from your day of celebration and leisure to reflect on the brave sacrifices of those who have given their lives for this great nation. In honor of Memorial Day, we will adjourn today's meeting in memory of, again, all those brave ladies and, men and women who died, but yet are still some of these people alive and serving the public because they survived these great wars. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before this commission, this meeting's adjourned.